Yeah, I make a motion. We defer the item to... Can you hear me now? Yeah, I know it's gonna end up in a Verizon commercial tonight. So, let's okay, let the record reflect that all council members are present and accounted for tonight. I think I will lead the pledge of allegiance. And, let's see, the pastor has not arrived yet, so what we'll do is call on somebody to do the invocation. And, you know what? Eric's not here tonight, is he? Okay, well, you know what? Anybody, anybody want to do an invocation tonight? Want to do one tonight? This is why I'm kinda stretching this out a little bit. Well, I'll tell you what we can do. It's not the way we would normally do business. We'd always have the invocation first, but we can rise for the pledge of allegiance, do that first. And, and then, yeah, he even gave me a bio, so. Then, if he comes in the first few minutes of the meeting, we will, well, if not, then we'll find a way to make it work out. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Not yet, okay. We're just gonna kinda, kinda stretch this out a little bit here. Give them the opportunity to get here. I can do that. I can absolutely do that. So, when the pastor gets here, Reverend Andre Ramos is the pastor at Guardian Angels Catholic Church in Santee. Reverend Ramos has been a priest for 35 years and a pastor at Guardian Angels for the past six years. Reverend Ramos earned his degree from the University of Santo Tomas, Manila, Philippines. And this is the 61st year of the Guardian Angels in Santee. Before Guardian Angels was built, Santee Catholics had to go to Lakeside or Allied Gardens for Mass. Mass in Santee was first held in a Quonset hut on Quayamaca Street by a visiting priest from Saint Therese in Allied Gardens. And, so that's what I have for him, and he still isn't here yet. That's all right, though.
Mr. Mayor, would you like to do the library presentation? And perhaps he'll arrive at that point?
Let's do that. Sounds good.
Okay. It's working. Thank you.
Perfect.
Thank you. What a great night to present to City Council. You guys are very un-intimidating right now, I just have to say.
We can change that.
Okay, okay. I'll be serious. So, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Liz Vigani, and I am the branch manager at your Santee Branch San Diego County Library. You may have seen my name on some of the monthly City Library reports that we send in, but I'm really excited to be here in person tonight. We're just gonna spend a few very quick minutes providing a brief overview of the library's mission and the services that we offer here in Santee. So, the decisions that we make on how to offer services are based on the library's mission statement and our four guiding principles that you can see here in front of you. Using this framework and an extensive process of data analysis and community feedback, the library staff provide expertly curated programs for the residents of Santee. So, the First County Library in Santee was a lending collection established on just a few shelves of Greenleaf's Ice Cream Parlor in 1915. So, in the subsequent 108 years, our presence and services have grown significantly. It has been our great privilege to offer the residents of Santee unparalleled access to books, technology, and lifelong learning. So, what you see in front of you is a brief overview of the many ways that Santee residents utilize our library services in fiscal year 2223. We've got over 25,500 cardholders here in Santee. We've had 200 programs with over 11,000 attendees, 112,000 visits to the library with 402,000 items checked out. Almost 300,000 of those were physical items, but some of those were digital as well, and 17,000 total Internet sessions were initiated. So, we promote learning and exploration and discovery and fulfillment for personal growth. The library really serves as a hub of learning for all ages of Santee residents. We cultivate school readiness through twice-weekly early literacy enhanced storytimes. We do outreach storytimes, including filming those for Santee TV. And we also offer monthly early learning workshops that we teach to incarcerated mothers at Los Colinas to help them understand how to work with their children when they're reunited to get reading skills early on. As of 2021, there were 1,200 households in Santee that did not have a broadband Internet subscription. The libraries really worked to address this issue by facilitating technology access both at home and in the branch. This includes in-branch services such as free Wi-Fi, tech help sessions, et cetera. And actually, in the past year, we have also checked out 317 Chromebook and MiFi hotspot kits, including a year of free Internet service to people in the community. They can bring those home and use those for a year. And also, we offer just a wide variety of continued lifelong learning for all ages. We also champion civic engagement and support individuals in shaping the future of their community. We really believe that all individuals should have access to their government at all levels. That's very important. So, in partnership with the Registrar of Voters, all SDCL locations are now ballot drop locations. What that means for Santee is that in the November 2022 midterm election, 51% of all ballots that were returned via ballot drop were dropped in our library branch, which was 4,525 ballots, to be exact. And in order to facilitate open government, we really love that, so we post all of the municipal documents, including city council documents. We print those out for people to read and have access to. We also have collections of environmental impact reports, and if you're ever looking for information on Camp Elliott, we are a local repository for the Army Corps of Engineers, so they keep all of our stuff updated for us. And we partner with the wonderful city of Santee and their staff to provide all sorts of different programs, presence at outreach events, and programs all summer long and all year long in partnership with the city. We love to read. It's our thing. We're librarians, what can I say? We encourage reading in every way to develop skills, to build hope, to nurture a love of reading. Using their library cards, our customers have free and instant access to millions of books, physical and digital. And outside of our own walls, library staff engage in a lot of literacy-oriented outreach in the community. We do class visits for local students. We have book clubs at LCDRF and at Lantern Crest Senior Living Facility, and we do storytimes for adults over in Edgemore who can't leave their facility, so we go there and read storytime for them. We just did one on the Eclipse, and they loved it. We did Eclipse classes. It was really great. And of course, for folks where those millions of books seem intimidating, you're in luck because we have expert staff who are ready to help people navigate through that. Our final guiding principle encourages creativity as both a participant and a creator. We have a lot of programs each month for children, teens, and adults to engage in the arts. These range from musical concerts to resin art to watercolor painting classes. In addition to these library curated events, SDCL offers admission for free to a lot of local popular attractions through our new Discover and Go program, which includes things like free tickets to the San Diego Zoo and SDSU athletic events. So, we try to make that open for all community members to be able to get a hold of those services and enjoy their creative lives. So, before wrapping up, I would like to mention the Friends of the Santee Library, whose diligent work funds many of the excellent programs we talked about tonight. And then, also, to learn more about the Friends of the Library, you can visit the Friendly Use Bookstore, which is right next to the library. For anybody who might be watching at home, because I'm a big fan of Santee TV, learn more about our events and services. It's always available at sdcl.org. And thank you for your time. Please let me know if you have any questions tonight.
Do you rent costumes?
Sadly, no, but we do have...
Sorry, guys.
We do have Halloween PJ storytime.
That sounds like, you said PJ?
It's geared towards children, but of course. Any other questions? Thank you all for your time this evening. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. All right, we're going to rise and have Dustin Trotter do the invocation for tonight. Thank you, Dustin.
Laura, take a moment to recognize your presence with us tonight. And tonight, here at the City Council, we pray for your wisdom, guidance, and reverence tonight, but really heavy-hearted with the war going on in Israel. We pray that these terrorists get, get rid of, out of our world and really make peace in the Middle East. This is something that's weighed very heavy on me the last couple of weeks, and I really hope that our country, our civility, our people, and our independence for this country shows light and takes precedence over the rest of the world. In God's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you.
Keep it simple.
All right, that takes us to the calendar. Are there any items to be added, deleted, or reordered? Councilmember?
No.
Or should I say Dr. Hall?
None for me.
No, sir.
No, sir.
City manager?
No, sir.
City attorney?
I'm here.
Yes, sir. I have a speaker on item one and two.
One and two. Okay. Let's go to item number one, then, which is the approval of reading by title only and waiver of reading in full.
Are we approving the consent calendar first?
Oh, well, kinda got ahead of me there when you said on items one and two, so.
Motion to approve the consent.
Second.
Item number three on the consent calendar. Okay, please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, now, let's go to item number one, then. Approval of reading by title only and waiver of reading in full of ordinances and resolutions on the agenda.
Truth.
This is Truth, ready to disrupt the status quo better than Joel Anderson and bring this of engagement Liz just mentioned. I remain against passing resolutions and ordinances by title alone. I am also against deceptive titles as well as unnecessary resolutions and ordinances. And on another flip side, I am pro-reading titles before an item is spoken about. I actually would like to see each word in each resolution, each ordinance, be read aloud. And specifically, I would like to see John read each item. It'd be fun to hear him complain a lot while living in San Diego. Or, how about opposing this item one, so you can read item four in its entirety? Let's see if you've got speaking endurance like me. I think we could even have a presentation on this item highlighting things like cost-benefit analysis or time-benefit analysis. We could really deep dive and provide tons of information about it, kind of like reading the contents of an item rather than just the title of an item before it passes. More information is always better. Some may say TMI, but I say FYI. Thank you.
Motion approved. Motion second, please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. That takes item number two, approval of payment of demands as presented.
Truth.
Okay, let's see. $15,480 to ICF Jones &amp; Stokes for the multiple species conservation plan. MSCP, it's so easy to say. I can say it. I know people struggle just to say that word. Uh, let's see, either for mountain lions to kill our pets, or butterflies to fly away off the land, taken away from humans. But which one's more expensive for a city? I think is the question. Is it consulting, or is it lawsuits from the state? Because that's what that's really about. $18,000 to Jet Advertising for the new city website. There's that down payment, I believe it was. $5,625 to Pat Davis Design Group, and I'm assuming that's the graphic art for the city website. That's a company based in Sacramento. And $960 to RASA for a map check of the future Popeyes Chicken. I like to mention food. $24,871 to SDES, I don't know what that is, for the replacement of the town center Charlie Square Clock Tower panel. I don't know if I saw that. The screen rental and DJ services for movies in the park cost $1,675. And what's great is I think I know how Marlene found 6,000 sandbags. We've got a charge of $6,436 to Cornerstone Aggregates Inc. for sandbags. And, you know, I told you, next time, save money, just scrap sandbag. One gigantic sandbag we could use. Thank you.
Second.
A motion second, please vote.
Motion carries unanimously. No further speakers, sir.
Thank you. And that takes us to non-agenda public comment. Speaker slips.
We just have one speaker, Truth.
All right. By now, I'm sure some people are probably thinking that I've been inviting or paying people to come here and say nice things about me, but that's definitely not true. In fact, I never told anyone that I speak at this city council. That's how private I actually am. Regardless, I'm really grateful for the good people who said nice things here and support me, and they just get it on multiple levels, and they're fighting the same fight even with different beliefs and ideas about solutions. And I just want to let people in on my day yesterday because it was a book's worth of living. At the County Board of Supervisors, I gave 10 speeches. That means I spoke for about 20 minutes, and I was not the only speaker there. So, not just at that nine-hour meeting, but to give an insight, I spoke about gangs, gel, politicking, MTS, BMX bikes, automatic license plate reader software, and camera-maker flock having a monopoly on the country's privacy, political theater, Prop 13, slurpees, disrespectful county workers and nice county workers, the dangers of constitutional conventions, homeless encampments, and San Diego's failures around it, Israel's use of white phosphorus bombs since 2009, speaking in different languages, the gun reduction agenda, illegal immigrants being given Americans money, sheriffs that don't follow the law, and so much more. With unbelievable backstories that I cannot say here, I have to get my own microphone for that, and maybe I will. I talk to all kinds of people from every political spectrum and perspective and agenda. So, I have a related thought challenge. What makes America a country? Every single person's country is different and unique. I've even been called "very different," and I don't disagree. But because we're all so different, what holds us together? So many have different religions, different lifestyles, different accents, different languages, different food, and different beliefs, so what unifies us, if anything? The answer is actually very simple. It's freedom. The freedom to be how you want to be and to live your life the way you want to live it, as long as you're not encroaching upon another's rights. It's very simple. So, it's no wonder that there is the least amount of unity we've ever seen in this country. We've lost more and more freedom every year for at least the last 90 years. But the mindset solution is also simple. Thinking about what it is that unifies us, accepting that as the foundation of our country, and then defending it until the bitter end for every single fellow American, no matter what the differences in beliefs are. I would like people to consider that and not be so quick to judge people or throw people away. And lastly, I have a fun idea, totally different. At city-sponsored events, I think the city should set up a booth to explain to people what a city council is, who's on it, why it's important, where City Hall is at, and how they can come speak. Wouldn't that be fun? Also, I would like the picture-in-picture to be brought back because I want to remember Laura's beautiful smile. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it? All right.
No for the speakers.
That takes us to item number four, which is a public hearing for conditional use permit, P2022-10, and mitigated negative declaration, AEIS2022-11, for the auto center with two dealership buildings, a detailed building, a body shop, an automatic car wash, and related site improvements on 13.1 acre site located at 10335 Mission Gorge Road in the general commercial zone. Michael.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. The item before you tonight is a request for a conditional use permit proposing an auto center on a 13.1 acre vacant site at 10335 Mission Gorge Road in the general commercial zone. The project location, as highlighted in this aerial image before you, is the southwest corner of Mission Gorge Road and Cottonwood Avenue. The site also has frontage along Railroad Avenue. The site is immediately surrounded by automotive uses to the north, an apartment building and single-family homes to the east, single-family homes on a mobile home park to the south, and multifamily development to the west. The site itself is in the general commercial zone, as mentioned, and the surrounding uses are in the general commercial zone, multifamily residential zones, R2 zone, and general commercial zone. Here's an aerial view of the site. This is looking southeast toward the site. This is a photograph from Mission Gorge Road from the easternmost end of the site, looking south onto the site from Mission Gorge Road. And then, this is also looking south onto the site. This is the westernmost portion near Cottonwood Avenue. And this is an eastern view of the site from Cottonwood Avenue and Happy Lane. And this is a view from the frontage along Railroad Avenue. This is looking north onto the site. This is the proposed site plan, landscape plan. The development would consist of five buildings with associated parking, drive aisles, utility improvements, trash enclosures, and landscaping. The project would include six driveways, as depicted by these arrows, into the site, two on Cottonwood Avenue, three on Mission Gorge Road, and one on Railroad. Proposed public improvements include sidewalks and fully landscaped parkways along the frontage of Mission Gorge Road, Cottonwood Avenue, and Railroad Avenue. Six to eight-foot-high masonry walls would be provided along the perimeter of the site. The eight-foot wall would be provided specifically on the eastern boundary of the site, adjacent to the apartment building that is near, near the site. The total parking field consists of 688 spaces. Specific to the dealerships, there'd be 94 spaces for display, 305 spaces for inventory, and 81 customer spaces. This is the site plan overlaid over the aerial to show how the site relates to the surrounding area. The developer is proposing to align the easternmost driveway along Mission Gorge Road with Edgemore Drive, which is a signalized intersection. The proposed buildings, I'll go through them, building by building, but this is an inset for the first proposed dealership. So, this particular rendering is showing the first dealership, the proposed Chevy dealership on the western end of the project site, with the dealership building of approximately 34,000 square feet. This second rendering that'll come up is of the proposed second dealership, which is about 33,000 square feet in size. This is near the middle of the property. The proposed auto body shop is about 16,400 square feet, and that's on the eastern end of the, of the property along Railroad Avenue.
I'm sorry, Mike. Go to, what's, whose property is that behind with all the rocks and the Stonehenge there, basically? What's going on with that? Is that Michael Graham's property, or is that their property?
I'm not sure who the ownership for that...
That would belong to Daryl Priest.
Okay.
And then, this final rendering shows the car wash, which is complementary to the auto dealerships as most of the, as all of the autos will be washed at this car wash. It will be open to the public as well. And here's a comprehensive view of the entire development, looking southeast onto the site. We did work closely with the applicant's development team on high-quality design of the buildings and also the landscaping. We drew some of our inspiration from kind of high-end dealerships like this inset shown before you. That kind of mimics the proposed landscaping. Mitigated negative declaration has been prepared for this project with mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program, which are attached to the staff report. We received two comments, two comment letters for which responses have been prepared, and those are also before you. At this time, staff would recommend that you conduct enclosed a public hearing, you adopt the mitigated negative declaration, and approve the project by adopting the resolutions before you. This concludes staff presentation. The applicant is present tonight to speak on behalf of the project as well.
Thank you. Speaker slips.
Yes, sir. I believe that's who I have speakers for. Manny Sedano.
Actually, Jim Moxon, I'll go first.
Okay. Jim, Jim Moxon is the other speaker.
Those are the only two speaker slips? Okay, thank you.
Good evening, and what a joy to be here and to see that I can be flown anywhere with the vice mayor and maybe out into space with the mayor. But certainly, it's exciting to be in this kind of community where you can do that and do that well. Honorable Mayor Minto, Vice Mayor Kaval, council members. My name is Jim Moxon, Ted 580 Prospect Avenue, Santee, and I'm here tonight on behalf of Cameron Brothers Company, headquartered in Santee and founded 76 years ago, to ask for your support of this well-conceived, comprehensive auto center the staff has presented to you tonight. You know that the site has been escrow multiple times with multiple buyers, all who walked away from it. And Cameron Brothers stepped up and acquired the site approximately four years ago, believing in its potential and our ability to deliver a first-quality project to the city of Santee. Santee Auto Center is the result of our investment in time, expertise, and capital. We are especially pleased with the quality and comprehensive nature of the project that Manny Sedano has created on the 13-acre site that provides the needed facilities co-located on one site. The Santee Auto Center has two dealership opportunities, each selling a projected 2,000 new and used cars annually. There are service facilities that will accommodate 130 customers per day, per dealer. If your car is damaged, there's a separate auto body shop to complete the repairs on-site. And because everyone that buys a car, services their car, or picks up their car at the case and auto body shop, have one thing in common: We all expect to pick up a clean car. And these cars will be washed at the onsite public car wash, everything being on-site. This comprehensive plan creates synergy and eliminates duplicative facilities at each dealership. The benefit of not having a car wash tunnel at each dealership affords the opportunity to have a more efficient site, allowing the better use of the site for displaying vehicles and ultimately selling more vehicles. If not mistaken, this will be Santee's first and only new car dealership. If not mistaken, this will be Santee's first and only new car dealership. This site will be a powerhouse and an excellent revenue generator. Mr. Sedano will follow me and share his thoughts and visions for the Santee Auto Center. But before introducing Manny Sedano, I would like to first thank staff. There's more behind the rest of the staff for your hard work in working through the entitlement process over the last 12 months. With our team of consultants left by Kevin Perry, Principal of HED Architecture, our consulting team are here in attendance tonight, should they be needed, to answer any of your questions.
Thank you.
May I just carry on for another minute? No.
Three minutes, Rob.
So I'll cut him to Mr. ...
No, can't do that. Cut your three minutes. Have Manny come up. Sorry, Jim.
I want to express how excited I am personally that after more than six years we've been pitching and planning this project to come and bring Chevrolet to the city of Santee. Since 2017, I've been working on this project and convincing the Detroit team at Chevrolet that Santee would make an excellent dealership location. Driving them through the city, viewing the Costco, the town center, the proximity of the school site, finally obtaining approval from Chevrolet for this Santee location is a perfect site that allows us the ability to build a comprehensive auto center incorporating car dealerships for retail and commercial business, a major collision center, and a car wash, all on one property. The opportunity to be the first in building a fully-fledged, functional new car dealership here is also very exciting. And the people in Santee and East County need more options closer to home. I believe in that. We have a tight timeline, and we would appreciate the city's full cooperation in helping us meet our deadline of being operational in late 2024. And just to finish Jim's last paragraph here, since Mr. Sedano needs to be operational by the end of next year, there's a lot of work to get the site ready to deliver to him so he can start building construction. We would request that, without eliminating any conditions of approval, that flexibility be granted to staff in meeting the conditions of approval in a matter that allows sequencing the construction in the most expedient manner. This will help us get the project out of the ground, operational in the shortest timeframe. And that's all.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Ron?
Well, the mayor and I met with Jim, and I do have a... And we were concerned about the car wash. Do you have a minute to ask... To go over that? Jim, I guess, or Mike, can you pull up the...
Who's the question?
Anybody wants to deal with the car wash part of it? Can you pull up, I think it's slide six or something? About right there. Okay. My big concern is how many cars will be in that queue to go around? I just... I keep worrying about cars lining up on the street. Are we going to have a problem with that?
The queue can accommodate up to 12 right before the payment bay, and then the tunnel itself can accommodate up to six vehicles.
I guess we're about 18 vehicles. That's probably okay then. I just worry about them being on Mission Gorge and, you know, traffic coming at 50 miles an hour. And if it is a problem, would they consider shutting it down until we get the cars out of there? That would be my only concern with it. Also read about the rock crushing, and I'm not sure if you can handle that. How long is that going to last? Because I would not want to be hearing that all day long for seven months.
Yeah, I think that may be a better question for Jim regarding the rock crushing operation.
We believe that a rock crushing will take two to three months to first break down the larger signs, to break it into two-by pieces that could be hauled off potentially, or it can be grounded into base and reused on the site underneath the parking lots.
Whatever gets it done quicker, because that's my concern, is, you know, phone calls will be coming, as far as I'm pretty much sure on that one. So whatever gets... I know that the landfill does rock crushing. If you have to send some out there...
It's in our interest to get it done as quickly as we can.
Okay. And we will work with you to do that. Pretty much that was it. You know, that looks good.
Yeah, well, the site's been vacant for quite some time, and I personally am really happy that the Cameron family stepped in to develop the site. I know there was a lot of start and stop. Jim and I spoke several times before COVID and after COVID, and things changed. But this, to me, appears like a great use for the site of all the things that could go there. You know, it's operational during the daytime, so probably more friendly for the neighborhood. And you're right, we don't have... It'll be the first-ever new car sales. I met with also the team last week, and we went through their business model, and I was really impressed by the team that they've put together for this operation. I like that they're selling commercial vehicles at their site. I like the fact that there's a car wash there. I do expect my car to be clean, either after I buy it or service it, or, you know, it's an added benefit to have one in the area, but I know that there's other car washes around. I don't think their biggest user is going to be outside, it'd probably be inside the dealership itself with that many cars. And, you know, Santee believes in keeping our cars. We're not going to force everybody on the trolley, so we definitely welcome you to Santee. And I make a motion to approve staff recommendation.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Ron?
I'll just echo the applicant's request that we... Staff does everything they possibly can to make sure that this moves along. Don't like getting phone calls of delays, changes, last minute, added items after the fact, so if you're... I appreciate the city manager to make sure she stays on top of this project and gets this going sooner rather than later. We have a ton of projects that have been approved over the previous years and still aren't breaking ground. I don't want the same thing to happen to this one. So, thank you. I'll second the motion, sorry.
Got nothing else. The only thing I'll say is that, you know, I looked at this, and when I saw some of the renderings, the only question I had was, are we going to put in regular-sized sidewalks? Because if you go down there now, the people have to walk on about two feet of a sidewalk and right up against a fence, and it's really not all that safe. And the answer, of course, was yes. These are regular-sized, meandering sidewalks. And they're actually quite attractive. Having... Just having this whole place cleaned up is such a benefit to the community. And, you know, I know, Manny, you own other car dealerships. And, Dustin, check, and I haven't found any negative comments, you know, other than what, you know, some people are never happy. Doesn't matter what you do. So I think it's going to be great having you here in town, and we want to welcome you to the family. And so I have a motion. In a second, please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. And believe it or not, that brings us right back around to non-agenda public comment. Speaker slips?
No speakers, sir.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to council reports. Ron?
Another enforcement, this time in La Mesa on Amaya Street, for the MTS trolley. Again, almost similar results to the last one, 34% fair evasion rate. There will be one coming to Santee in the future, and we're working our way down the line and trying to get that up and get MTS people to pay their money.
Thank you. Laura?
No report.
Dustin?
Just wanted to remind the community that we have our annual rivalry football game coming this Friday here in our community. So, as it is, it's rivalry week. Rob and I did a little friendly wager, as we usually do, so the winner's team, the opposite person will be up here wearing the opposite colors, you know, come the 11... Or, excuse me, November 8th meeting, right? Yeah. Whatever our next meeting is. So I just want to remind everybody, it's at West Hills High School this week at 7:00 PM Friday night, so go out there and cheer for your side of the town.
Meaning Santana.
Who's going to win that game?
Santana. 17-14.
I'll just remind everybody what the record is in 33 years of this...
Last year was Santana won.
West Hills has a 22-11 lead in 33 years.
All tides must change.
I say let me dress you.
Oh, no, 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 no. Yeah, I'm good.
Is there an over and under on it?
Yeah.
Do you have anything else?
Yeah. Want to congratulate everybody on the Bruise and Bites event that was... That happened on Saturday. A lot of people had a lot of fun out there. Only two comments, I call it negative comments, that I got were, one, stop changing the name. People don't know what the heck they're going to any longer. If anything, maybe go back to the Bluegrass Beer and Wine Festival so that people know what it was, what it is, and what it's going to continue to be. So stop changing the name. And number two, make sure the band doesn't stop playing constantly. There was a lot of dead time of music, but other than that, fun time had by all. We actually had really good weather. It stayed nice and cool for us without raining. It was perfect weather. Lot of happy people out there, including most all of us, including all of us, yeah. So, thank you for staff and all the hard work from all the different departments to put that together. DL did a great job. Thank you.
I didn't know if you were going to recognize Walter in the crowd tonight, so I thought I was going to say hi.
Sorry. Walter did an amazing job. Mr. White did an amazing job, keeping his team moving forward and setting everything up, tearing it all down in the most expeditious manner. So, thank you, Mr. White.
John, can I add one thing? Today, Councilman Trotter, Vice Mayor Cavall, and myself attended... Ernie Dronenbergs was awarded... Had his name put on our tax collector assessor's office today, so it will now be known as Ernie Dronenbergs. I can't say it.
Dronenberg.
I know I can say it any other time, but it'll be under his name, and it was a nice ceremony. And he has had a long career, 50 years, of serving the community, and it was a very nice presentation, so.
Thanks. And I really don't have a lot either. I just want to talk about the Bruise and Bites also. And, Rob, I did get the same comments about the name, so we talked a little bit about that there, Dustin and I. So, we're probably going to bring that back at some other point in time. So, Nick, we'll probably get together, chat about that a little bit, too. And, but, you know, there were so many people there that had so much fun. Came by, my wife and I, we served. I got to put on a different costume for the night, and it went over really well. And, you know, so I just say, you know, that's the second favorite event for me. Obviously, Santee Salutes is the first. And so we just keep on keeping on. Santee... Well, let me say this. Obviously, we don't mind having fun in Santee. Have council that dresses up. Sorry out there if you didn't get your candy, but that's the way we do things here in Santee. So that's all I have. City manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. I do want to also add my thanks to staff, the volunteers, and all the council members for coming out to Bruise and Bites. It's really great to see your support of events here in the community, and I know staff appreciates it, and I appreciate all the hours that were put in to make that event happen. So congratulations to everybody. There are a couple other activities happening here in Santee over the next week. On Monday, October 30th, we do have a blood drive. You know, it's a little ghoulish being around Thanksgiving... Pardon me, around Halloween, so a lot of blood. But we do a blood drive, 9:00 to 3:00 o'clock here at City Hall. You do need an appointment in advance. You can get that by contacting the Red Cross at redcrossblood.org and clicking on the City of Santee event, and you can still come in and you can give blood. So we appreciate you if you want to do that. Again, we also do have, for the second year, I think, in a row, spooky snapshots that's going to be happening here at City Hall in front of this building, the City Council Chambers, on Tuesday of Halloween. All of you are welcome to come and get your snapshot taken in front of the building. That would be great. And it is really designed to go from 11:30 to 5:00 so that younger children have a chance to come out and enjoy trick-or-treating and being, you know, celebrated in their costumes before it gets dark. We do have free photos that you can take in front of a really great backdrop. It kicks off trick-or-treat. The Sheriff's Department has agreed that they will come out from 12:00 to 3:00. They're going to have a table with lots of goodies, and you can get your picture taken in costume with a deputy. And then we're working on the fire department there, chief, to make sure that we get a fire engine or some other pub ed booth, so you can have a firefighter there as well. So that's on Monday, or pardon me, on Tuesday, the 31st for Halloween. The last item I have for the community is that we are updating our veterans' presentation to honor our veterans here in Santee. We do a veterans' photo contest and recognition, if you note, along Mast Boulevard as well. We have videos that are going to be placed right before Veterans Day. So if you know of anyone who deserves to be recognized for their service or you want to recognize them, please contact our Santee TV team, or you can find them through the city website. Get us a photo so that your favorite veteran can be recognized for their service, and we appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That closes my... Well, pardon me, Mr. Guardian of the Galaxy. That closes out my report for tonight.
Star Lord forgives you.
No report.
All right, then. We have no closed session, so that means we're getting out of here at 17 minutes after 7:00. Meeting adjourned.
The meeting is over.
The meeting is over. The meeting is over. The meeting is over. The meeting is over. The meeting is over. The meeting is over. The meeting is over.